Good afternoon, everyone. This is Shreveport City Council Meeting. It's now been called to order. I'm going to ask Brother Alex Ray to lead us in the invocation, and then I will ask Councilman Jackson to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. This is the day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. Father God, we ask that you bless each individual here today, Father God. Each representative, Father God. And we ask that you have your way today, Father God. Father God, we just pray for the city of Shreveport, Father God, that they continue to move forward. We ask that your grace manifests here in Shreveport City, Father God. And we just thank you for each leader, Father God. Let your grace overflow in their lives. And we thank you for it right now. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, will you please call the ro- I'm sorry. I was ready to go.
If everybody can recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor, present. Councilwoman Brooks.
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor Farrell. Councilwoman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Bowman Bowman.
Present.
Madam Clerk, will you read the amendment to the October 27th, 28th, 2025 meeting minutes?
Amendment number one to the Administrative Conference and Council Proceedings. amended minutes of the October 27th through 28th, 2025 meetings as published in the Official Journal, the Official 2025 Council Proceedings Book, and as published on the City of Shreveport City Council webpage. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to November 21st, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve this amendment?
So moved.
You want to finish? Don't pause, Dan, you know I'm ready to roll.
I had to catch my breath. Okay, so, read number as follows. Ordinance number 113 to 137, ordinance number 114 to 138, ordinance number 115 to 139, ordinance number 116 to 140, ordinance 117 to 141, ordinance number 118 to 142, ordinance 119 to 143, ordinance 120 to 144, ordinance 121 to 145, and ordinance 122 to ordinance 146. This amendment corrects the numbering of ordinances listed on the introduction of ordinances in the administrative conference meeting and introduced at the October 28th, 2025 regular meeting of the city council meeting due to duplication. These corrections are clerical and do not affect the title or intent of the ordinances as introduced. The Official Journal, the Official 2025 Council Proceeding Books, and as published on the City of Shreveport City Council webpage shall be updated to reflect this correcting number, the corrected numbering.
You ready?
I'm ready.
So moved by Councilman Jackson. Second, second by the chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five?
Six.
Six.
Councilman Butcher said yes.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve minutes as amended of the Monday, October 22nd and Tuesday, October 28th, administrative and council meetings? Got a second by Councilman Jackson. Did you move it or you second? Okay, moved by, okay, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote. I've had too much coke, apparently.
And this passes with six?
Okay. Does any council member have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes? I do. I don't see Attorney Besada. Is he? Okay, there you are. See, you just rolled in. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
You must have been watching prizes, right?
I was. I was.
I'm a Plinko fan myself.
The floor is yours, sir.
Oh, I just wanted to give you an update. Today, we're introducing the bond ordinance y'all previously passed a resolution allowing us to go to the bond commission to refund three series of our outstanding water and revenue, water sewer revenue bonds. This is the next step, just the introduction of the ordinance that will be brought up for final adoption in December. And essentially, what we're coming to ask you for is to be able to sell these bonds. We are expecting a very good savings for the ratepayers in the form of lower interest rates. And this would just allow us to do that. It's not extending anything. The, it's not adding any additional time to the bonds. It's simply just getting a lower interest rate so that we can save the ratepayers money.
Any questions? You didn't win any prizes. You can go on.
I want to spin the wheel.
Okay, you want to spin the wheel?
Yes.
Better spin it on out the door. Al Moore?
Mr. Moore, thank you so much for coming down, and thank you for what you do for the community. But I do want you to share what has been happening since the government shut down.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Taylor, Mayor, oh, Councilman. Yeah, we have seen a greater impact in the last two weeks of increasing clients coming to our facility. During the beginning of the month, our numbers kind of go down because people have resources. But as of last Monday, 11:03, we averaged at breakfast 175 individuals. Normally, at the beginning of the month, we do from about 1:32 to 1:23 on that first other month. And at breakfast, at lunch, we did 250 people on 11:03. Again, once again, we still doing an average of 190, 175, but that's at the beginning of the month. At the end of the month, our numbers fluctuate from 250 to almost 300. So this week, to date, we did 175 at breakfast. We did 250 at lunch. That's just today. We doing the average of, before the government shut down, we was doing the average of 1400 to 1500 meals a week, over 9,000 a month. Last month I just closed out, we had 16,000 to 17,000 meals a month. So it's $4.12 in a meal. $30 a month would feed one person one meal for seven days. $130 a month would feed one person one meal for 30 days. But think about it. We do two hot meals a day, 364 days a year. Anyone walk through that door can get a hot meal. They don't have to be questioned. They don't have to have no revenue. We don't do no checks and balance on them. But we do do a count. So we can, like, if I come to you or come to the City of Shreveport for some funding, I can give you the actual number per day, per month, per year, how many clients we serve. We have seen the last two weeks, children, they must be home schooled because they might not be reading their snout benefits. They are coming in with their parents to get lunch.
Any questions from council?
I don't have any question. I'd just like to commend you all for what you do. And that's why our church, that's why we send our tithes to Christian service, because you all are so effective in doing what you all set out to do. I'd just like to say congratulations and keep up the good work.
Yes, we always say things we do. When you was thirsty, we gave you drink. When you was hungry, we fed you. When you was naked, we clothed you. That's what Christian services do, 364 days a year. Sister Margaret started this ministry in 1970. Fifty-five years later, we're still doing her work that she started. And thank the city for what you do. And the city, the police, everyone who helps support what we do every day.
Councilman Butcher?
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. And I do think that we're in some hard times right now, not only with the government shutdown, but just with inflation. And I think it's really impacting people. And I know that there's talk of the government shutdown ending, but it's not a done deal yet.
Correct.
And so we need to keep that in mind, that there's still a lot of negotiations to do. And with the holidays coming, I just applaud what y'all do and pray for bounty for those that need it.
Just think about it, you can't do anything being hungry. You can't study. You can't work. You can't function. But to see a person come in Christian service with their head down and leave with their head up because they got a hot meal.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I don't think that sometimes people understand that the, a lot of the individuals that come to Christian services are not homeless.
They're right. That's right. We have working clients that actually, if they don't have to spend $7, $8 at McDonald's or wherever, they can come to get a meal. And we don't ask any questions where they from or anything of that nature.
That's extremely important. So we have this allocation on the agenda. Won't be voted on until December 9th for Christian services. You got to keep doing what you're doing because you're part of Maslow's hierarchy and making sure that those particular basic needs are met for every person. And you have to be fed, and you have to have security. You got, must feel safe, all of those things. Because you cannot function if you're hungry. You cannot think straight. You know, there are a number of things that go on through your body emotionally. But most of all, you have to eat to live. And so we want individuals in our, in our community to thrive at any level. Then we need to make sure that they have the basic needs. All right? Thank you so much, sir.
All right. And I just want the citizens of Shreveport to know that with the free bus rides throughout the city, if you can get to the fairground bus, you can get to our facility. We do breakfasts from 8:00 to 10:00, and lunch from 12:00 to 2:00, seven days a week.
Breakfast is from 8:00 to 10:00 at Christian services?
Right.
And what time is lunch?
12:00 to 2:00.
12:00 to 2:00, seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week at Christian services?
Twenty-three, forty-six, leaving street.
And bus rides are free in the City of Shreveport?
Right. If they get to the fairground bus, they can get to Christian service.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Green?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have my friend, Nodj. Come on up, Nodj. Huh?
It went no wrong.
Okay. Okay. Said me took the wrong time. I'm just playing.
Councilman Butcher. The, I believe the young lady is here. It represents the fiber company. Remember, you asked about the fiber?
I did.
She's here.
So can you kind of give us just a, yeah, just a... How are you?
Good.
If you could just kind of give us an overview of exactly what we're voting on here. I think we have a lot of questions.
Yeah, I heard from Attorney Edwards that y'all had some questions about the term dark fiber and the concerning word of dark fiber. Dark fiber is just optic, fiber optic that has not, that's been installed but has not been lit to internet service. So we just provide the infrastructure. We don't provide to the end user. That's when people, companies come in and lease from us the dark fiber, then becomes lit. And then that's where the 5% goes to the city. That, if you look at the franchise agreement in there, it's a 5% of gross profits from the city is paid to the city from Hunt Telecom. So dark fiber just means unlit fiber. It's just the infrastructure that we lay.
So, so the franchise fee's not paid until you're receiving revenue off of it?
Correct.
Anybody else have any questions? That's what we wanted to understand, what was dark fiber?
Yes.
So you actually need somebody to connect?
Yes.
Got you.
It's not lit yet.
Okay, perfect.
Then the fiber becomes light.
Yeah, that's right.
Any further questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you.
He's back.
Okay.
Come on up now. Come on up. Come on up, Nodj.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On behalf of Dollar Mania, I want to sincere thank, thank you guys for allowing us to be part of this wonderful community for more than 25 years. We've been blessed to serve the people of Shreveport, Bossier City, and Minden with eight locations across the area. When we started, when we started this journey, we never imagined growing this far. And this is all because of you, our customers, our neighbors, our community. Your continued support has made it possible for us to keep our doors open, providing jobs, building relationships that means more than any sale ever could. We take pride in keeping our stores clean, welcoming, and filled with products that helps people feel good about themselves. But most importantly, we take pride in being there when the city needs us, whether it's helping out the kids, supporting the local events, or in lending hands that while we can. We do it because this community has always stood by us. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you for letting Dollar Mania be a part of your lives for all these years. We don't take it for granted. We'll keep doing our best to give back and grow alongside with this amazing city. Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to say a thank you. And I go in your stores, and it's always pleasant. The atmosphere is great. You all have great product. And it seems as though you all have a staff of employees that are always happy. And they just have, it seems as though they love people and they enjoy serving people. And I just wanted to bring you all and thank you for the Dollar Mania that's in my district. Always go by there and see Nodj. Nodj, you want to have a word?
You got to have a word.
How y'all doing?
How are you?
Good. Mr. James, obviously, you're District F. And you do a lot for our community over there. And I appreciate you for that as well.
Okay.
And for everybody else in different districts as well. There's other...
What's up, Nodj?
How you doing?
What does Councilman Green buy when he comes to your store? Because it's mostly wigs, isn't it?
All sales, we're not allowed to basically discuss what every customer comes to get. But that's a very good question.
You don't have to say.
It's a very good question.
Don't tell him about the stuff I make my hair shine on.
You might have to check that.
Does y'all's security cameras still work at Dollar Mania?
It does, it does.
That's a part of the ordinance.
Might have to tug on that beard one time, see if it's real.
But, Nodj, I really appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir, thank y'all.
I appreciate the friendship, and I appreciate your kindness. And certainly, God bless you all and keep on doing a great job. And so that they'll know that you were here, we'd like to take a picture with you while y'all here.
Yes, sir.
All right.
No problem.
Anyone else got anything that you'd like to add?
I just want to know, did he buy wigs?
Don't, don't, you don't have to answer.
Did he buy a wig? That's all I want to know.
We got you whenever you're ready.
You don't have to answer, Nodj. Just don't worry.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Mayor Snow, do you have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any other communications of the mayor relative to city business?
No, ma'am, not today.
Okay. Does any member have any questions or concern relative to property standards from Mr. Green?
Just a quick question. There's been a lot of talk about the theater in the news about the infestation issue that they've had there at Tenseltown with the rats and whatnot. So, well, I know that we had problems in the past with that ditch back there, with it being full of those people. You know what I'm talking about on Millicent Way?
I believe it's the levy board that handles the ditch.
Somebody put some fences up, but I think you had helped me with it in the past.
We cited some people for dumping.
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure that, if you don't mind, have your people maybe go by there periodically. I rode by there, and it looks pretty good right now. But I don't want us to get blamed for those people dumping stuff in there for what's going on inside the theater. Thank you.
Terris, we ain't get a chance to tell you to sashay. You can sashay. You can sashay.
Everyone should have received the Revenue Collection Plan and Implementation Report. Public hearing today, we are required to hold a public hearing on the 2026 proposed budget. This public hearing is now called to order. Does the administration have a presentation?
Madam Chair, just a very brief one.
Okay.
Just for the public, this is, this is part of a process. For the city council, mayor provides draft proposed budgets to you October 1st. You have until on or before December 15th to pass them. So you have heard a briefing from us a couple of weeks ago. Today is the public hearing. Later in the week are two separate, fairly lengthy budget review sessions. So this is the opportunity for the public to weigh in. Just to let everybody know, essentially, most of our budgets for next year are continuations. There are no changes in sales tax rates, in water rates, or property taxes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or in opposition of these ordinances? Going once, going twice, gone. Not this public hearing as well.
For the, for the record, again, what are the dates on the hearings where people can, will know?
November, was it 12th and 13th? Yeah, this week.
12th and 13th.
Mm-hmm. The 12th starts at 3:00. And then the 13th starts at 8:00 a.m. Yes.
Mr. Blackwell is here. I forgot to announce that on Wednesday at 12:00, I believe it's from 12:00 to 2:00, Mr. Blackwell. Come on up. And you can tell us what's going on. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Thank you. I had slipped my memory. Tell them what's going on at 12:00 in District F, out at the airport.
It'd be at 1:00.
1:00.
At the airport in front of the sign. The, there's going to be a dedication, a check for, from the Committee of 100 for cameras on Monk House Drive corridor. And there's going to be some information out there on that. And we're going to have, you know, a good, a good meeting on that. So we're expecting about 60 people.
It's Wednesday?
Wednesday at 1:00.
Wednesday at 1:00. You all are cordially invited. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there free parking?
Yes, yes, for the event, sir.
I would just want to know.
The way you don't treat it, man, you want some free parking.
I was just trying to see if Councilman Green was going to pay for it.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would there be any legislation added today?
No, ma'am.
Today, we will hear public comments on... Agenda and non-agenda items, correct? Okay, agenda and non-agenda items. You have three minutes to speak. And Madam Vice Chair will control this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Alex Ray?
Good afternoon to Mayor and City Council Board. I'm here today just coming with great news, excitement. I know you guys always have problems. Oh, let me see the address. 2510 Malcolm Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Good afternoon to Mayor Tom and City Council Board. I come to you guys with great news and excitement. I know you all always have problems that come to you all. But I'm here today to bring a solution. And I'm here to bring you about, talk to you all about my foundation, which is called His Care Foundation. And this is a foundation nonprofit that is going to be here in Shreveport, is going to bring an apartment complex here in Shreveport that's not only going to be an apartment complex, but a transitional apartment complex to help homeless families. We have over 716,000 families that experience being homeless here in Louisiana. I want to bring a solution here to Shreveport, and I'm asking for your prayers and support as I continue to move forward to bring this here. And if you all have any questions for me, please ask. But I'm definitely determined to bring a solution to help end the homeless cycle here in Shreveport and to bring hope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Okay. We have no executive performance.
Excuse me, just a second. I do want to acknowledge one of my board members, Ms. Mary. She's here with me as well. And like I say, we have a great board members that's with me as well as we continue to bring hope to our city. Thank you all.
Thank you. We have no executive performance to consider today. There are no items under consent agenda for introduction or to be adopted. Madam Clerk, please proceed to regular legislation.
Resolution 125, authorizing the mayor to execute a telecommunications franchise agreement with Hunt Telecommunication.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Green. Second by Councilman Brooks. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five?
Resolution 130, adopting a 2026 DDA program of work, and this will need to be postponed.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion postponed by Councilman Green. Second by Councilwoman Bowman. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five?
Resolution 131, authorizing the mayor to execute an entity-state agreement between the City of Shreveport and the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. And this will need to be postponed.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Postponed by Councilman Green. Second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five?
Resolution 132, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving a property located in District D described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the City of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to this intent, related to the intent of this resolution. And this will need to be postponed.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion postponed by Councilman Green. Second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five.
Resolution one thirty-three, authorizing the city of Shreveport purchasing agent to reject all bids received for pavement improvements, bid IFB twenty-five dash zero five one.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by the chair, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with five.
Resolution one thirty-four, authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all bids received for security guard services proposal, RFP twenty-five dash eight eleven.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five.
Resolution one thirty-five, authorizing Shirley Lewis at sixty-six sixteen Woolworth Road to make connection to the city of Shreveport water and/or sewer system.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Madam Vice Chair, second by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five.
Resolution one thirty-six, to reinstate the Charter Review Committee.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by the chair, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with five.
Resolution one thirty-seven, designating the week of November third through the eleventh, 2025, as Veterans Celebration Week in honor of veterans and active-duty members of the armed forces.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by the chair, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
This passes with five.
Resolution one thirty-eight, to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted in other charges in the 2020-25 Revenue Development Special Revenue Fund.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion postponed by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
Resolution one thirty-nine, to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from the funds budgeted in other charges in the 2025 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion postponed by Councilman Green, second by Madam Vice Chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
And this passes with six.
We have no items under introduction of resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to December ninth, 2025?
Ordinance one forty-seven, amending the 2025 budget for the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance one forty-eight, amending the 2025 budget for the Healthcare and Technology Innovation District East Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance one forty-nine, amending the 2025 budget for the Healthcare and Technology Innovation District West Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance one fifty, amending chapter seventy-four, the Code of Ordinances. And ordinance one fifty-one, a series ordinance pursuant to general bond ordinance, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one hundred and ninety million dollars of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds in one or more series of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms, and conditions of said bonds, authorizing the use of the preliminary official statement, and the preparation and distribution of an official statement authorizing the purchase of and subscribing, subscription for certain escrow securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of escrow agents, and authorizing execution and delivery of paying agent registrar agreement and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
So moved.
So moved. These items have been introduced.
Who is that move? Who motion is second?
Green.
Green and Vice Chair Bowman. Madam Clerk, please proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinances one thirty-seven through one forty-six to be postponed.
And if there are no objection, I read them all at once?
That's right.
And do one vote.
You want to read them all at one time and do one vote, okay?
Ordinance one thirty-seven, amending the 2025 budget for general fund. Ordinance one thirty-eight, amending the 2025 budget for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Ordinance one thirty-nine, amending the 2025 capital improvements budget. Ordinance one forty, amending the 2025 budget for the general fund. Ordinance one forty-one, amending the 2025 capital improvements budget. Ordinance one forty-two, amending the 2025 budget for the Economic Development District L Special Revenue Fund. Ordinance one forty-three, to amend chapter eighteen, article three, division three, concerning abandoned aircraft. Ordinance one forty-four, amending chapter thirty-eight point five of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to environmental court fines. Ordinance one forty-five, to amend section sixty-six dash one forty-one of chapter sixty-six of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to contribution by full-time active employees and retirees. And ordinance one forty-six, declaring certain paint and equipment acquired for federal community development block grant funds as surplus and authorizing their disposal or donation to qualified nonprofit organizations substitute conditions.
So moved, postponed.
Second.
So moved, postponed by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Mr. Dark, will you please give me a listing of those items that are supposed to be donated on one forty-six, please?
Will do.
It's attached. It's attached.
I'm sorry.
It's attached.
Okay. Let's vote. Councilman Jackson.
I did.
This passes with six.
Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table today?
No, ma'am.
We have no property standards or ABO appeals to consider today. We have no MPCZBA appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
No, ma'am.
Mayor Arsenault, do you have any additional communications?
No, ma'am.
Is the city open tomorrow?
No, ma'am.
Hey, please tell them again.
City holiday.
It's a city holiday tomorrow, so the city of Shreveport will be closed. I want to thank all of our veterans as well for the service that you have provided to us in the city of Shreveport and beyond in this nation. Does any council member have any additional communications? Executive session there is none. If there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
It ain't no rec.